Twenty P M. Twenty twenty four. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted on the Act Call of the Council of Chambers in the Roll Call. Tyler.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
May.
Yeah.
Please stay here for the Fledge of Allegiance. Fledge of Allegiance.
This is the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna jump down to number five right away. Public hearing of one and six, she approved, you know, and associates. So a motion to open the public hearing.
With the motion.
Second.
Second.
Tyler. Kareem.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Yes.
All right, so what is six? Does everybody know what it is? Kind of why we're doing it? Why we need to do that?
Yes.
We today. You all know it? No.
She's back.
I'll give a do a quick lowdown. So every year the county and the state collects gas taxes and your registration tag fees for license plates. And so then the state takes that money and reallocates it back to the communities. And so they, in order to kind of, you know, decide how much everybody gets, uh, the state, uh, part of this project, they keep a lane mile report. And so they they keep track of how many lane miles of road every community has within the jurisdiction of the city. And so depending on how many roads you have compared with everybody else, uh, you get so much money back. So in twenty twenty four, uh, Plainview got two hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and forty-four cents. And then in twenty twenty five, uh, they expect that to go up a little bit to two thirty-one, eight oh three. So in order to keep receiving those funds from the state, they ask the community to keep an updated, uh, maintenance plan of the roads. So this their intent is put this money to go to road maintenance, construction, fixing potholes and things like that. So every year where they ask us to update the our one and six year road plan, and so that's what we're here to do today. And, uh, so on the map that we've got, we've the we've got, uh, streets that are in the red are the one-year streets. So those are kind of the higher higher ranked streets that we want to get done. In the next year or so, the streets in blue are the secondary streets that are further down the road. Now, the nice thing about the plan is that even though that a street is on the on the plan, you know, the community isn't required to spend that money and fix those sections within that one year or six years. It's just a matter of prorating or, you know, ranking the streets and having a plan of what you're gonna do with the money. So, um, anytime we have a street project and, uh, we go in and, uh, do some work on any of the streets, it's always good to make sure that those streets are on the one and six because the the state likes to see, hey, you know, we're we're doing progress. We spent some money. Here's for some of your money's going back too. So that's the whole purpose of the one and six year plan.
Thank you.
So, uh, what we've got now is, uh, everybody's got the map kind of in front of you. And, uh, so Plainview would like to usually what we do is they'll do a resolution to approve the plan. Uh, but for Plainview, uh, they'll like try to keep that open for a month. And then next month, they'll adopt the new plan if there's any changes. So, um, we can, if there's anything that we want to change now, we can certainly talk about it. Um, it's 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 pretty simple to add or subtract sections of road. It's just a matter of, uh, of, uh, so.
You got anything? Okay. Any questions?
Just keep working.
Well, I think Plainview's doing a pretty good job. You guys have been doing a handful of street projects and, you know, we're working on Lincoln Avenue right now. You know, so go to some communities and the same projects are on the plan for ten years, so. They're doing a good job.
Thanks, Carter. Motion to come out of public hearing?
Make that motion come out of public hearing?
Second.
I'll second.
Tyler.
Aye.
Kareem.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Okay, back up to number two, approval of minutes from previous meeting. Any questions on the minutes in the last meeting?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Second. Tyler.
Aye.
Kareem.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Number three, claims and payroll. Questions on claims and payroll?
I agree on that. Make a motion to approve claims and payrolls.
Okay, second.
I'll second.
Tyler.
Aye.
Kareem.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Four reports, managers, you lead.
Our last, uh, monthly meeting was on October twenty-fifth. Uh, we talked about the employee health insurance in depth again. Um, we did make a final decision and was having a special meeting in there also on October twenty-eighth to go with Medica. Uh, the reason for that is due to the fact that C H I is under non-agreement with Aetna at this time and it was gonna finalize in November. Um, if they would continue with them and then also with our local pharmacy was not gonna cover Aetna no more. And we wanted to make sure we were able to support locally. Uh, so we kind of had to go back to the drawing board a little bit. Uh, we did meet the deadline. We do have insurance. Uh, the facility had increased the portion for the employees to pay per paycheck. So at this time, they're at a hundred and fifty dollars per paycheck. So three hundred dollars a month to cover their own insurance on a single plan. And then we have a single plus one plan, a child plan, added with employee, and then a family plan. So my employees are paying three hundred dollars a month for their insurance themselves. Uh, working through that process with agents yet, uh, with kind of the timeframe. Uh, not exactly content with our agents at this time. The board wants to search out, but it's bad timing. I've visited with one, bad timing at the time, so we'll continue with that process going forward. Um, and it really hasn't seemed in this last week to improve with our short timeframe here that we were hoping for. Uh, we did talk about laundry feasibility, um, the protection of what I told you last month about possibly adding on and making some changes there. I did visit with the architect that did assisted living back in two thousand. Uh, he is kind of getting to the semi-retirement age and finishing a huge project in David City at this time. So he declined to, uh, want to pursue that, but, um, has a close connection to Plainview. Uh, and so he has reached out to another, um, architect had suffered with him the other night, making sure it be somebody that I would be interested in. And then I have another architect that I'll be visiting with also. So that name just came in yesterday, so I haven't made a phone call yet. We are installing another camera throughout the facility just to keep things open in the building. Uh, we talked about education training versus what is required and what is recommended, and we kind of went through those things. Uh, we did have an employee grievance, but we're discussed that. We did have our assisted living life safety code survey on ten twenty-two, and there were no deficiencies in that also. Uh, the board, you guys all wanted my contract to be brought up earlier, so the board may note, no discussion on it, just that they are aware that it is coming up for renewal. And then we talked about employee Christmas party twenty twenty-four, and we'll be putting a hold on that.
Okay, any questions for Julie?
They did go and exact the session and and open the employee surveys, um, so they stuck around. And like there's been nothing further on that that I'm aware of, so I'm sure they will come back into discussion later.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julie. What is she first meeting?
Hey, everybody. So last month, our numbers were down a little bit. I kind of it's kind of hard for the course of time of year. Um, we did get three abatement, well, two abatement sun, Woodland and Plum, which went, I don't wanna say without a hitch, but it went rather smoothly considering the individual we were dealing with. Um, the property on South King that was expected to be abated, she actually removed the camper. I told her she had till Friday. It's just a matter of like, these vehicles that she has, really, I was talking to Jeremy, we don't have any place in town to put them to make it look like that so it didn't look like her backyard, right? So we're thinking if anything, when we come across something like that, um, maybe the C and D where it's under lock and key until we can figure something out. I was talking to Dan about a an impound lot here in town. I was gonna bring that up maybe in a couple of years, maybe we can get something for the vehicles that we do tow for situations such as this. And he said to hold off on that because that's something he's gonna be looking into in about a year. So if the county gets an impound lot, we would be able to store vehicles like that in on that lot. And, you know, just again, I can't go into semantics with it because I really don't know. He just said hold off on that because it's something he's gonna be working for. So, um, Sydney Eversol, who did own that prop, who owns that property on South King, she's doing a really good job of getting the vehicles out of there. Um, a lot of the crap is is gone. Um, so we're moving forward with, we served, um, Katie Jenkins at, I believe it's one oh nine South King. The backyard is horrible and there's a car back there. Andrew's taking very good care of getting these instances out and then explaining to people what's happening. We also served Susan Henderson at two twenty-one South, uh, First Street. I don't know if you guys have been past that house, but it's just gotten a lot worse. So, um, Jeremy, I don't know, Bob, if you guys got the email from Andrew with the date that he served him, so it'll be ready for payment. I do have the list and I gave it to Andrew on the ones that you and Jeremy went and looked at. So he went and got pictures of a couple of those properties and we'll give it what it's up to. Um, I think that's all I have for last month. Again, like I said, the numbers are a little bit low. Doesn't mean we weren't busy. Just a little bit different busy, so, um, you guys have, oh, dog kennels, we did get our license for the dog kennel. Uh, and a local, we'll be discussing that later, so I'm not gonna go into that right now. But as far as local dogs, we can go ahead and start putting them in the kennel if we got dogs at large. And we'll be putting more out, uh, pop up an article in the paper in about a month, maybe not quite that long, saying, hey, it's open up and running. So if you got a dog at large, give us a call and we can use the the kennel, so. Now, you guys have any questions for me? Okay, um, I don't know if you were at the program for the veterancy, usually at the high school, but Kareem was the keynote speaker. You guys missed out on a really good speech. You did a really good job, so thank you for that, Kareem. It meant a lot to to everybody, so. That's good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Economics Development Report.
I'll skip that because most of it's on the agenda.
Yeah.
That's what we got background in there.
Okay, City Superintendent Report.
Uh, here, you look down through your list. Our guys been busy. See if there's any questions. Getting just getting ready for one at a time is the biggest thing, and then we're kind of tying some loose ends and and getting some water, so. We'll do some more water this next week. Obviously, we have some big holes up front of the water tower, or in front of the power plant. And then, um, we're getting ready to fix it. We have another one in between subway and Steve right now is kind of by the ground, so we gotta fix that first. So we'll have real water here tomorrow to help locate the actual break. So everyone's go turn it on and start putting some concrete, so.
Okay, thanks, Jeremy. City Attorney Report, Kyle, you got anything now or most?
It's on the agenda items, but it's kind of a busy month. And the thing that wasn't included on the agenda is I did prepare a request for reasonable accommodations. Um, so if a city employee would ever need an accommodation, uh, due to, even if it was just a short-term disability, uh, a form that they could fill out and submit to the city, so we had means to process those types of requests.
That's great, thank you. Okay, number seven, Discussion Action IRP Loan Curtis Scott Law Office. Amount of one hundred thousand IRP, amount of thirty thousand, L B eight forty, twenty years at four point five percent.
Okay, so yeah, um, L B eight forty met, um, a while ago. Um, they did decide to, um, grant him a hundred thousand IRP loan. And then obviously the match or a little above the match for thirty thousand is L B eight forty. Um, Courtney did reach out to the USDA. We did get a one-time approval to exceed the seventy-seven thousand dollar, um, limit because that's usually our max, usually seventy-seven and twenty-three. Um, since this was the ending of our, um, loans, because we'll, if all goes through today, we'll have expended all of our first original IRP note. Um, so that'll actually finish finish off the whole program, and then we'll start be able to revolve that as you can see down below. Um, so. That would be the first one. Can I hear?
Eddie?
Yep, can you hear? That's it for that one.
So do we need a motion on that?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve the loans for Curtis Scott.
I'll make a motion to approve the IRP loan. Curtis Scott Law Office for a hundred grand.
Second.
I'll second.
Tyler.
Aye.
Kareem.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Okay, six forty-five, we're gonna jump back up to number six.
Sure, sure. So I think he's here in the crowd. Should I ask if he doesn't want to say anything about his law firm, but.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry about that.
We're past that. I'm okay with that now.
Now you can see how you really feel.
Number six, public hearing, L B eight forty, six-month review, six forty-five P M.
Any motion for that?
No, I'll just take her.
Okay.
Uh, make a motion to open a public hearing?
Second.
Second.
Tyler.
Aye.
Kareem.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Last one, isn't it?
So when you have an L B eight forty program, you're required by the state every six months to just give a review, um, in a public hearing setting. Um, so in the last six months, um, they have discussed the IRP loan for Curtis Scott Law Office. Uh, two IR, well, an IRP loan and L B eight forty loan for Third and Bell Custom Woodcraft, which also was then changed to an IRP loan, so two IRP loans, and then an L B eight forty loan for Jay's Place. So, and it's all on the agenda tonight, so I'm not gonna go into much more depth about that, but that's pretty much all they've done the last six months.
He's told.
It's a lot of money coming out, so.
That's good. Any questions? Motion to come out of public hearing, then?
Make a motion to come out of public hearing?
Second.
Second.
Tyler.
Aye.
Kareem.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Down to number eight. Discussion Action IRP Loan Third and Bell, amount of twenty thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars IRP, amount of six thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars for L B eight forty, twenty years at four point five percent. That would be Brian Richter. Carter, I'm sorry I didn't introduce you to, I'm going too fast.
I'm sorry. Thanks.
Yeah, so this is the, um, exact same terms as what Carter's is. Um, I guess if Brian wants to say, Carter's is probably a little more straightforward of what what he's doing, obviously, with his law office and he's purchasing everything. Um, Brian, what are you doing with yours?
Well, it's gonna be first trying to rescue that old building. That's my normal priority. Uh, it needed a lot of love or still does. Uh, but as far as the business goes, I do a pretty broad range of things, whether it's photography, custom framing. Uh, I've got a grant that I that I've got that I've applied for that's hopefully gonna allow for some additional equipment that'll allow me to do some really high-end printing. Uh, so I'll be able to offer a service to other photographers and things like that as well. Um, and then just, uh, you know, the furniture repair and just woodworking in general that I do. Uh, so by being spread out, I typically am probably keeping busy. I hope to do something pretty neat with that building, get it, you know, give it a new life where people can come in and look around and relax and, you know, see something neat, see something that you don't see everywhere, you know? Something kind of cool, maybe I'll draw some people in.
Excited to see the progress, yeah.
It's come a long way. So far, it's just been about ten or twelve loads to the dump, but, um, I did tear out all that old concrete here in the last week, and, uh, we got that poured today behind the building. It was in pretty rough shape. There was that old coal chute on the back of the building that had rusted out. And just water just, it was a free-for-all running in the back of that building. So it was just constantly wet in the back half, and we got that dug out and poured up and then a new slab over everything. So hopefully we got the water under control.
Just glad you didn't fall off the building when you fixed the wall.
Yeah, I'm not excited to go back up there.
So I I will say that the reason for the odd of the twenty thousand and two thirty-two, that is the final amount for IRP or total of the four hundred thousand dollars. So that finishes up our loan as a whole.
Okay.
Any questions? Any questions looking for a motion?
Just making sure I'm out of motion right. Uh, make a motion to approve the IRP loan for Third and Bell?
Second.
I'll second.
Tyler.
Aye.
Kareem.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Number nine, Discussion Action IRP Loan Third and Bell, updated eleven eight twenty twenty-four, eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars, ten years at four point five percent.
Okay, so we actually read this one. Um, he needed the extra money to finish his project. I started housing L B eight forty loan. Um, Courtney and I met with the USDA, um, head guy, Brent, and he explained to us that obviously the interest that we get off of these loans go back to pay towards our principal interest of our original four hundred thousand dollars and our interest on that one. Um, but what we can do with the other, the actual principal we receive back is we can't utilize it to pay off our note. We have to revolve it. So we actually had enough money sitting on our principal side to start revolving it. So now we can use those loan payments from this to actually start paying off the interest of that to help us pay off our note. So, um, our goal is, obviously, the way it's set up, which we found out, is as soon as principal comes in and enough that somebody wants, the best thing we can do is keep revolving it, so it's a it's a perpetual, um, loan to our businesses. So what we went, we went forward, asked L B eight forty, hey, please don't give them your money. Please let the city council give them their revolving IRP loan, so. So if anybody sees notices around town that says, don't give Brian money for L B eight forty, that's, that was a true story. I did call him before we did that. Um, they're still gonna get, we're, we've still plan on giving them the exact same, um, years and interest as what the L B eight forty offered him. We thought that was probably fair. So, but this was an actual council decision, but so the L B eight forty board offered him ten years at four and a half percent, so the eighteen five. And there does not need to be a match in this part because it's the revolving side. Um, so this loan, the revolving money, doesn't actually have to go through the process as the USDA. Um, we still have to follow some guidelines, but we don't have to match with any funds, so.
Motion to approve the IRP loan for Third and Bell?
Second.
I'll second.
Tyler.
Aye.
Kareem.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Number ten, Discussion Action L B eight forty loan added eleven eight twenty twenty-four. Jay's Place Ice Cream Machine in amount of six thousand dollars, five years at six percent.
She's also here. Wanda, yes, she's right.
Hi, Wanda.
Hello.
You wanna explain what you're gonna do with your?
Well, first of all, um, uh, with managing and helping out with the Just Love Cafe, I, the discussion has always been to bring Jay's Place with the ice cream in. The, uh, conflict I was having when I was looking into these options is I wanted my old machine. And, um, through the discussion of getting a new one or a different one to work for the facility or to get the one from the actual Jay's Place that I had a year ago, um, I was able to discuss with the owners of the now, uh, location of Jay's Place to buy the machine. And we concluded with a six thousand dollar agreement, which was considerably less than the first amount of loan that I was inquiring about. So, um, knowing that machine and having had it for six years, I know the the quality of it and I know it'll be fine. So I was able to, uh, request and and hopefully ask them for just the six thousand to be able to get some ice cream going in Plainview here.
Uh, I am.
As long as it works better than the McDonald's ice cream.
Anything's better than that. So.
L B eight forty, they were happy to do it, so.
Make the motion to approve the L B eight forty loan to Jay's Place for the ice cream machine for six thousand dollars?
Second.
Second. Go ahead.
Tyler.
Aye.
Kareem.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Okay, number eleven, Discussion Action Resolution Number seven thirteen, Year End Certification of City Street Superintendent.
Okay, so this is the final step to make sure you can keep your money for this year, uh, as we talked about earlier. So even though you do your plan throughout there, you have to submit different documents to the state. So this is the final one, just saying that we had a city street superintendent and, um, that we had a plan in place for twenty twenty-four.
Motion to pass Resolution seven thirteen, Year End Certification Certification of City Street Superintendent?
Okay, second.
Second.
Tyler.
Aye.
Kareem.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Number twelve, Discussion Action Approval of Employee Wages for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, effective October first, twenty twenty-four. And that's Jeremy to make up this comparison for the wages and then to the far right is what was discussed in the digital workshop. This is a comparison. Just show you what we have. Any discussion?
I don't have anything. I'm gonna make a motion to go with the.
Oh, okay.
Oh, can we?
Yep, nope, um, we did find out, which is a good thing. I don't know if we can add it here or not, but it'd make it easy for Courtney, um, since we're doing backbeat October one. Um, Kyle and James both passed their super test.
Oh, yeah.
So they just got approved. We just came in mail Friday. Just got it.
Yeah, so if we could just add the dollar to their wages right now instead of waiting until next month and redoing their wages again, it would be super, super helpful.
She asked that today, yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm like.
Because we, yeah.
It's action.
Yeah, so you give them a dollar anyway when they get their license, so if you could just add it on now, then I don't have to redo it again.
James, Kyle.
Yes, next month.
Okay, make a motion, all right?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, suggested budgeted wages, but also starting October first, but also including Kyle and James's, uh, dollar incentives for passing the test.
Okay, second.
I'll second.
Uh.
Aye.
Kareem.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Okay, number thirteen, Discussion Action Ordinance Number one thousand one, City Administrator Salary Effective October first, twenty twenty-four.
Well, I will say about, uh, Kyle, he, uh, he only missed two on his entire test, so they were, they said that's super rare, so he was pretty excited about it.
Yeah, knowing he had half the information.
Yeah, he said they didn't get, they, when they printed it out packets at the class, they, uh, it's supposed to be two-sided packets, they only got one side of them. So they both come, went back from the workshop and said, oh, I'm not gonna pass, and that either, he's just really good at guessing or he's a very knowledgeable man, one of the others, so.
Give that guy a raise, yeah.
If you look at the comparisons on the sheet that Jeremy drew up, you can see the percentages. And since we're playing a little catch-up with wages, I mean, I would like to recommend the in line with the others, the seven percent. Any discussion?
So the ninety-one, three eighty-five. I'm just throwing that out there because it's blank on our sheet, so.
Is it it?
It is.
On your order list.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a feeling. Yeah, it shows his current salary on this name list.
Send a motion.
The motion.
You've been so good at it.
Yeah, uh, I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance one thousand one, City Administrator Salary Effective October first, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Second.
Hey, Tyler.
Aye.
Kareem.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Number fourteen, Discussion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to waive first, second, third, Kareem.
Good job, Tyler.
All right.
Second. Second.
Tyler.
Aye.
Kareem.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Let's forget. Number fourteen, Discussion Action Approval of Contract for City Administrator Effective October first, twenty twenty-four.
Um, so this is the contract we had last time with, uh, appropriate changes that cost, yes, so just the discipline.
I'll make the motion to approve the contract for city administrator effective October first, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, second.
I'll second.
Hey, Tyler.
Aye.
Kareem.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
I'd just like to point out one thing on Jeremy's contract. Section fourteen, and it's been a popular item of discussion with me and several people in the last month or two. But section fourteen says hours of work. It is recognized that the employee must devote a very deal of time outside the normal office hours on business for the employer. And to that end, employee shall be allowed to establish an appropriate full-time equivalent work schedule. Schedule may be altered by mayor if needed. And the reason I bring that up is people may see Jeremy here and there and think he's supposed to be working and he's doing something else. But he is allowed compensation because he attends many, many night meetings. And for instance, tomorrow, we're going to Carney for meetings, six in the morning, and it won't be done until seven or eight on night. So in lieu of him putting in extra hours, he's allowed to take a few hours off. And, you know, it's all honor system, and he's good about honoring it. He always lets me know when that's happening, so I just want to make people aware of that because for some reason it's been a topic of conversation to me in the last few months, and I just want to make that clear that. And I just wanna make that clear that he's doing a great job, thank you, there he is.
Okay, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Number fifteen. Number fifteen, discussion action, proposed budgeted utility rating increases for water, sewer, and electric.
Um, yes, we just want to, again, I'm, we'll have to do an ordinance for, for rates, I'm sure, next time, but I don't know, we put it out last month, um, nothing's changed on it, it's, it's the budget, the ones we talked about. I'm not sure how to work this month if we're ready or not, but, um, I guess, I don't know if anybody else have heard anybody from the comments anywhere, I mean.
When's the last time you raised the trigger?
Three years ago, for water, is that somebody right for me?
Thirty one, thirty one.
Yeah, and then electric has never been raised since I've been here.
Water, you went to your thirty two dollar, um, base speed.
Yeah, not last year, though.
No, but when you raised it, that's what you did, you went to thirty two dollars for your base speed, it's never been since twenty twenty.
I, sewer was already in motion.
Sewer was a three year, and it's on the third year now, probably for the third year or so.
Yeah.
It's been stuck at twenty, a couple years now.
Yeah, so sewer was approved before I got here, water, we did right when I first got here, and then electric, we've never touched since I've been here, so. Um, the only reason, other than that, reason we've done, we did trash last year. Yep, and C and D, yep.
Any discussion?
Is that everything that goes up?
We'll do ordinance the next month, then.
Okay.
We just wanna make sure this is. We just wanna make sure that nothing's changed and nobody had any kickbacks or, so, we'll do ordinance for next month, then.
Okay, everybody did with that?
Yep, we have to give them sixty notice.
Okay, number sixteen, discussion action interlocal cooperation agreement for dog boarding.
So, we had a couple changes that we needed to make last meeting, Kyle sent a revised copy, you guys have a copy of it in front of you right now. I like the way that it reads, it's, I, I don't think we need to make any other changes, Kyle, I think it reads exactly what we're trying to read. Jeremy had a couple questions, but it was something very menial, nothing that really we need to put in the contract. At least, I don't think, I mean, we, we've discussed it and worked it out, so I think we should move forward with this interlocal, give it out to Osman and Pierce. And I will say that Darcy Weehaas, she's our state, she's state rep, she does a lot of the breeding, um, licenses, boarding licenses, what we're looking for. Uh, this is really boarding, it's more like impound, impounding dogs. She was really impressed with the, the kennel, couldn't say enough about how well the city guys did putting it together, so. Um, and just by happenstance, one of the kennels has like a panel that kinda, it's too deep, so there's the original kennel, and then there's a, a panel that goes in front of it, so it's like, like a double barrier. And she's like, that's perfect, I said, it was really kind of an accident, but I, I didn't really wanna admit that, but she said that's good for like our dangerous dogs or huskies, cause huskies are escape artists, so they'll chew their way out of something if they wanna get out, so I think that, all in all, it turned out, turned out really, really good. And she, she just couldn't say enough about it, so, um, we'll be putting something in the paper, I'm not gonna give a timeline, I say within the next couple weeks. Um, letting the community know that this is now going to start taking place, we're gonna start going after people for not registering dogs. Had a conversation with somebody today that had ten chihuahuas, for God's sake, and not a single one of them was registered. And I was like, I can't even talk because they're all just yipping, and I'm like, ah, what I would love to do right now. However, um, so I think this is gonna, the new ordinance that we have out for removing dangerous dog breeds, and the lifetime twenty five dollar registration fee that Darcy was kinda shocked that we have, um, I think we're gonna get a lot more people to come in and register. And she gave us a couple of, um, ideas about like a monthly, uh, like a clinic, one time, within the next month, maybe get the vet to come over. I don't wanna put a lot on Courtney and Melissa, cause they do enough already, but have them available, so when they come to register their, their dog, if they don't have the vaccinations, then Chris can do the vaccinations at that point in time, so it's really gonna be like a come one, come all kind of a deal, so. I think that'll help us with keeping track of who's got what, and maybe send some letters out and say, look, here's a, and let's see, get your dogs registered, and then we'll start going after them, write tickets, so. Yeah, it's moving forward, so. I don't know, anybody have any questions about it?
How many of you people have a dog not registered?
Yeah, we'll be sending letters, so please give them. I'm dropping every cat on the door. So anyway, um, you guys have any questions, just, okay, bring it.
Okay, for a motion then, to approve the interlocal agreement?
I make a motion to approve the interlocal cooperative agreement for dog boarding.
Second.
Second.
Tyler.
Aye.
Karine.
Aye.
Tody.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Thank you, Christie and Jeremy, for all your work, and that, that was a huge problem for us.
Yeah, yeah.
We had nowhere to go with the dogs and.
Look at our numbers this month and last month, you'll see the dog calls we had in this league.
Nice work, yeah.
So now we've got someplace to put them.
Number seventeen, discussion action updates to police personnel.
Do you want me to come up there for this? I mean, I, I'm, can you hear me out, is this okay right here? So, uh, what, Karine, a couple of years ago, you'd asked me about a personnel manual, and we were just going, the police were just using basically the one that the city had. And low and behold, looking through all the junk that we have in that office, I came across the actual personnel manual that we have, but it's dated February fifteenth of nineteen ninety four. So reading through it, I'm actually kinda shocked at how, and Kyle, I'll get you a copy of it, cause maybe you and I can go over it and you can throw some advice my way, what you think we need to change. But there really aren't, there really isn't a whole lot of things that need to change, other than like mine and Andrew's continuing ed, ed hours that we have to get now that are required by the state. Um, our schedule, which we really, people don't quite understand that, we work three on, three off. So basically, we work a hard ten to twelve hours, if that's all we get called out for, anything outside of that, we're on call for basically seventy two hours. So, it's kind of interesting how back in nineteen ninety four, the schedule in here says three days on, three days off. Now, I don't know if they had three cops back in nineteen ninety four, I don't know. Um, I don't know how that, I, I guess that would work with three police officers, I hope in a couple years, as busy as we're getting, I'd like to maybe acquisition for a third officer, then we can just write that in here, but. Um, there's really not much difference from nineteen ninety four to today, other than like technology, body cameras, that kinda thing, which we do have, so. I can get you guys a copy of it, if you'd like to see it, I said I would put it in your packet, but I failed to do so. Um, but I can get you that copy if you guys would like to look at it, I think you and Karine and Tyler are personnel committee, right? So maybe you three would like to look at it, and we can still discuss it, but I'll definitely get one to you, Kyle, and then if you have anything you wanna throw at me, we can maybe discuss it, and then, um, hopefully have it done by next month. There were some addendums and, I don't know even what you wanna call it, but for the prior police department policy for holiday pay, when you can take time off, I mean, and it just seemed like, I'll show them to you, cause I was like, I, this doesn't even make sense to me, cause it really doesn't pertain to Andrew and I, and how we work, so. I think if they were ever adopted or put into the ordinance, I think that's something we need to look at and change, cause it doesn't really, I think, apply to Andrew and I, cause our integrity is just, is pretty good, I think, so.
Yeah.
I will get that out to you guys, look at it, I don't care if everybody on the council wants to look at it either, it doesn't matter to me. But I think we're pretty straightforward in what we do, so.
Good, good, good.
Yeah, it's so old, this paper's like yellow, and I think it was actually typed up on a typewriter. I'm not even kidding. So, I'll get that out to you guys, and I'll get with you, Kyle, on that.
Number eighteen, discussion action, accept construction bid for police station renovation.
Yes.
Added eleven seven twenty twenty four.
Yes.
Um, before you, you guys have two bids, um, one from Noble and Colours Construction, and the other one is from Artist's Construction. Um, they are apples to apples for what they, you walked through, actually, Seth was nice enough, they actually walked through, we talked, and made a list of things that might not be common, and so, both of them got showed the list or know the list, so they know exactly what, what Christie expects to have, have in front of them.
Any questions, discussion?
I think you say, Mr. Noble?
I mean, proof's in the pudding, my quality, we've all been to Just Love, the majority of, whether not you're a fan or whatever, my work, my ethic, it's there. Licensed, insured, bonded, state, local, certified.
So this says all material minus the secure window?
Uh, the window that's actually in the police station, the way that they have that set is we're able to heat it up, pull it out, and move it. It'd be literally the last thing that would go into that building.
Then you'd have to put another window in where you took it out of?
No.
No.
It's no longer police office, at that point, at that point.
Is it on the?
It's, it's a pastor.
What are you walking through?
It's, it's the, it's a pastor window, so they can literally move everything they needed to, and that, I can have it boarded up from the inside, have everything moved over there. And then the second that Christie says, Seth, today's the day, I'll run over, we'll carefully move it, get it over there, seal it up, done. Same thing with the entry door, those two would go at the same time, cause I wanna try to reuse that electronic lock. Sometimes that doesn't work. I got about a fifty fifty shot, cause there's little wires in there, and if they get moved just wrong, it's game over, and. That's just kinda how it goes, um.
How long would a build like this take you?
Uh, I know the next part in this is the electrician, and there's the ticket, okay? I mean, my construction time is gonna be about two and a half to three weeks. That's it, that's all I really need time for, um, with everything that I'm looking at. Getting the electrician, the availability, and scheduling all that, that's like why I do what I do, is I'm a general contractor, I line it all up, I work it out with him, that it works in a schedule. Um, with this being a bid thing in through the city, I mean, once you get that electrician and you accept that bid, no matter what I wanna do, or what any general contractor wants to do, we're stuck with that. So if they push off and push off and push off, that's where I would come to the city and be like, you need to contact this man. Cause I can't do it, cause technically, I'd be your construction guy, but the city's kind of gonna be the general contractor. So that's where the only holdup would really be, cause I can get in there, have it all framed out, have it done, maybe four or five days, everything's secure in place, and then it's their turn to go, and then it's just boom.
What about timing, Seth, when could you do it?
Well, um, right now, I have availability a little bit, eh, towards the end of January. Um, I could probably get it framed by the end of December, but like Brian, I'm working on my building too, and I, I just sold my building in Randolph, so I really have to devote getting all my stuff here, uh, but mid-February, as long as the electrical and everything play out in that way, it'd be done. That's what I can tell you.
Did Anthony happen to say anything about my meeting?
He did not. Hold on.
The way that my business works is I don't like jumping off of something, when I get on something, I, I do it, I get it done, it's completed, I move on.
Did Anthony talk to you, Jeremy?
Uh, he did not tell me the timeframe, no.
Did he say anything? He did not, yeah.
I should've asked, I forgot.
I should have also, but I feel to do that, but I can ask him right now.
I can call him, or you can text him.
I'll text him real quick. If you guys are okay with that, can I text sample?
Yeah, yeah.
Let's get down to it.
You all know what we're talking about by new police station, where it's gonna be?
Yeah, you guys familiar with where it's gonna be? No, okay, so, you know where, uh, Cassie Stelling had her country store, right there? Um.
The old council chambers.
The old camp, what, yeah, I didn't.
The old council chambers.
Yeah, um, it's just wide open, you guys feel free, if you ever wanna come look at it, do, come look where we're at now, and come see why I wanna move, like, as soon as possible. Um, but no, it's gonna be, it's gonna be nice, it's gonna be a nice move.
And the food bank would still stay there for now, right?
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
And as, as a caveat for this, I, I am gonna go ahead, just to mess with Christie, turn the bathrooms to urinals.
Oh. Joke's on you, why would you be messing with me? We are in two thousand twenty four, pal.
Probably not a good idea, Seth.
No, my, my dad was like, you gotta give her some ribbon on it, so.
That would be funny, I would be, you know what, Lord? You better be a praying man.
Living, that man comes rolling into town.
Hey, how are you?
With the, uh, moving of the police station, do you guys have any plans for the old building, or what was the idea of what you're gonna do there?
Um, currently, our goal right now, obviously, we're underwater right now, cause we have a water problem there, um, but our goal right now is to winterize it and try and make it a little more efficient, so. Currently, to heat that building in the wintertime, you're looking over two grand a month.
Wow.
So, we're, we're doing it more for efficiency, is what we kinda brought this on, um, with our generators becoming slowly out of there, and here in the next two or three years, the electrical will be completely done, the substation will be removed, um, so we're hoping to try just to winterize it right now, um, slowly start taking out the generators that are obsolete, and then hopefully have a nice, you know, big, open, empty, you know, building for, you know, anything.
That's what I was curious, I mean, if it's something that's gonna become, not for me, I'm good.
I said it'd be. I said make a great brewery with all the brick and industrial thing, um, but it'll take us a few years to get everything out, um, I did have a guy come in, and I spoke with him just to get a ballpark figure if what it costs for them to remove all the generators and the inside and stuff, and he told me, they get to keep all the copper, all the metal, and it only costs a city a hundred thousand. And I said, I think we can start, we can start plucking away on our own for a few years, we're in a hurry, um, so. He said there's a lot of work to it, and I'm sure it's all heavy, it's all big, it's, you know, we gotta pump out the oil, I mean, there's a lot of work to it, but.
All right, yeah, you know the guy will do it, you're welcome.
We, yeah, if we have a good, some slow time, we're first freezing, there's, you know, ground's frozen in October, you know, we're starting the year, we have a real cold year, and we can't dig or nothing, or we have any problems, we can just start picking at it. For a hundred thousand bucks, we can do a lot, so.
Oh, wow.
And if you notice, somebody who wants to scrap it out for just the iron, I'm, we can make a deal.
What are you scrapping out?
Power plant generators.
Oh, yeah, oh, that place stinks.
There, I mean, were the, uh, diesel generators, or what were they?
Like oil bath. That's the oil, the crankcase.
But the generator heads are all still there, aren't they? I mean, that'd be where your.
Yeah, it's all the coppers there.
That's where your shrapnel'd be.
So, I got ahold of Anthony, I do mean to interrupt, sorry. He said that if he got the bid, he'd probably be starting end December, middle of January. He said that he thinks it probably would take him four to five weeks to complete, but he's not a hundred percent certain.
Okay, council.
I don't know, I guess I'm, I'm leaning towards, I'm gonna make a motion to go with the Noble Colours, excuse me, if I said that wrong, construction. Bid for the renovated police station.
Okay, second.
I second.
Tyler.
Aye.
Karine. Tody.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Number nineteen, discussion action, accept electrical bid for police station renovation, added eleven seven of twenty twenty four. I don't know, we're about the same.
Yep. Did Jake change his, he did?
Yeah, he actually spent the loan without the lights and everything on there.
And I, I don't know if this is the proper question, but I'm gonna ask it.
Go ahead.
Is there any preferred electrician you would do?
I work well with either or, um, I've worked with Jake with a few things. I haven't worked with Seth Williams, but Jake says good things about him, I have worked with lots of different plumbers, and lots of different electrical guys.
I know Seth did the manner, Jolene said she was.
We do have a small issue, I'm not, I just, uh, I didn't know it, but the five, the state electrical inspector is back and something did not pass, and he, but he did great, he just talked to Seth and it's gonna be handled. But otherwise, no problems like working with us at all.
Where are they from, Seth?
He's here. He's here.
Here.
I asked Seth, when I, when he walked through. I asked Seth, when I, when he walked through, um, I asked him, I said, if you were to do this based on what little he actually has to do, because the light fixtures are set exactly where, that nothing's getting moved, nothing's getting added as far as lights are concerned, just outlets added, that kind of thing. I asked him how long it would take him if he were to do this job, and he said approximately two to three days, he could be done. Now, I'm just, and I asked, I really didn't talk to Jake, I think you went with Jake.
Okay, the the best thing I can, well, I I just work with Jake, okay, I've done things.
I'm.
I will say this is the best way, if I was on a council, is who has. How do I put this, because it makes you sound bad one way or the other. Um.
Just say it.
Who has the longest work log right now? Um, so talking to Jake the other day, he said, I don't even care, I'm so backed up, I don't know. So there's that, and I don't want to say bad in his favor, he is very good, and I know that he has the the percep- or perception, or whatever you want to call it, that.
The propensity to delay.
To delay, delay, delay. I will say this, uh, I I don't put up with it, and when I had to work with him, he he was there. Because I I would just go get someone else.
Yeah.
Um, and Seth, I know his his mother, and that's about the only way that I know him. Um, but I'm I'm okay with either choice and method. I mean, the best way I could tell you is who would be more available and isn't absolutely swamped at all given times.
They're both from Plante, so.
Yeah.
It's a good thing.
And I believe both do good work too, I mean, I just. I'm all about like, I want to get in, get out of this building, get into the new one, you know, I know I got to be patient.
I'll make a motion, and I'm going to. Make a motion, recommend Seth Williams electric.
Okay.
I'll second.
Tyler.
Hi.
Karine.
Hi.
Tody.
Hi.
Meg.
Hi.
Kyle, are we in the need executive session for Tody?
Yeah.
Okay, so just to do that, we end. We'll go down to number twenty-one. Discussion action, motion to accept deed in lieu of foreclosure for two-two-two East Locust Avenue, added eleven-eight, twenty twenty-four. And so, uh, uh, Becky Bender, I spoke to on the phone, and the city currently has a deed to trust where Catherine Shuts uh was the trust owner, we've got a deed to trust, and it sounds like they're willing to sign over the property back to the city. Uh, so we'll just do that with the deed in lieu of foreclosure, uh, since one of the terms of the trustee was residing at the place and Catherine is not even in the state, so, uh, we'll just accept that and glue up a foreclosure on it. And then also, uh, that would be a satisfaction of the indebtedness, so basically they just turn the property over to us and we stop hassling them.
I move that we accept the deed in lieu of foreclosure for two-two-two East Locust Avenue.
Second.
I'll second that.
Hi.
Karine.
Hi.
Tody.
Hi.
Meg.
Hi.
Number twenty-two, discussion action, motion to pay delinquent real estate taxes for two-two-two East Locust Avenue, added eleven-eight, twenty twenty-four. So once we receive the property, there's some delinquent taxes and those get penalized with interest at fourteen percent, so. As soon as we get the deed, I would recommend you pay the delinquent taxes. We know how much they accumulate. I think they're like a hundred and fifty bucks a year, um, but then with fourteen percent interest on top of it, so. Um, it'd be nice just to get those paid off. Not if we got it anymore.
Well, I think you always have to pay taxes, so I will move that we pay the delinquent real estate taxes for two-two-two East Locust Avenue.
Second.
Second, bud.
Tyler.
Hi.
Karine.
Hi.
Tody.
Hi.
Meg.
Hi.
Number twenty-three, council comments, anybody from the council?
I do. I appreciate the blue paint, if you haven't seen blue paint for uh handicap thing, I'm glad it's in front of Mary's.
Me too.
It makes it obvious that that is a problem.
Streets look better.
Yep. I li- I like the forty-five degree angle parking.
Yes. Yes.
And um, and I'm very happy that the US flag got placed at Memorial Cemetery on the west side, thank you very much, the boys. Jeremy and Rex did that on a Sunday, so that is your dedication, premier city employees. And we also had lots and lots.
Curtain James did that. We pulled it out, Curtain James put it in on the Sunday.
All right, well, it was a group effort and I appreciate that, and the flags, which we, you know where the flag depository is? We had a lot of them and the boys took care of that one, they took care of the of the burnout there, so I was appreciative of that, that they were burned real really. But looking hard.
I have a question, the flag de- what is.
Depository.
Depository, are you going to move that?
For two.
Well, I mean, if we're closing down the building, you're just going to leave the flag depository?
There's no heat in there, so it'll stay.
Gotcha, okay.
The flags don't need heat.
Okay.
Yeah.
It might be cold.
It is cold in there.
I know.
Okay, number twenty-four, public comment, anybody from the public wish to comment on anything?
I forgot to add one thing, I always do this, so please forgive me. Um, you know the house that Kevin and Penny Rasmussen own that's on eighth, it's eight, two oh three and a half, Eighth Ave or Eighth Street? Between the county barn, ci- and uh uh Mike McVannaman's alley, county is trying to buy that property from Kevin Rasmussen. Um, Tom Keeter just got ahold of me today, again, I think they're throwing a couple of offers at Kevin, and I think they're eventually going to be selling that property to county, they're gonna, what they're going to do is they're going to tear it down and use it for more parking space, so.
That that would be a good plan.
I think it would be a very good plan, though the trouble that we've had with that property, so.
Very good.
Um, I just wanted to share that with you guys, so that's another one coming down.
Yeah.
No, I mean, maybe. I'll just. I'm not public, but.
You are now.
We had our audit on the twenty-third of October and everything went well, so that's done for another year, I'll probably be here in February or March to go over it, as long as everything goes okay. Um, and I finished up our three-year handyman review the day after. And I finished up a four-month-long drug and alcohol policy review with the state of Nebraska as well, so.
Good job.
I had to do that with the hospital, so Jan and I had to work together to make sure we're following all the proper procedures for drug and alcohol testing, so. We should be all caught up now with that stuff, so.
Who does the test in the hospital?
Jan.
Jan.
Okay, so. I answered the city phone twice, too, so you guys know. She did great, I did great.
Okay, at this time, we're going to go into executive session, so we'd ask everyone to leave, thank you all for coming.